This meeting has come to order. Today is Tuesday, October 11, 2016. This is a study session of the Prescott City Council. Welcome, everybody. We have three items today. When we get to the one on vacation rentals, I will ask for public opinions because we do want to make sure that we have the best information going forward as we make any changes to our ordinances. Roll call, please.
Mayor Oberg.
Here.
Mayor Protem Lamerson.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilman Lozelle.
Here.
Councilwoman Orr.
Here.
Councilwoman, or Councilwoman Shiska.
Here.
Councilwoman Wilcox.
Here.
All present.
Item A, please.
Don't say it. Item A, presentation by Public Works of various capital improvement programs, CIP project delivery methods.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmembers. Welcome, City Manager Michael Lamar. Good to see you in here. Mayor Protem Lamerson, good to see you. We are here today for a short presentation. This year, you approved a budget for Public Works, about $90 million. $60 million of these for capital projects. Traditionally, here in Prescott and really in most other places in the nation, 90 percent, if not more, of the projects are done one way. And that's what you have seen so far. We go out to bed, but first, we design it, we go out to bed, then we build it. However, you have asked us to, you know, look outside and any other options. Although this system works for most of the projects, there are projects that are much more complicated, and it may be better for us to look at different ways, such as design and build. We do have some complicated projects. And with our buildings, and we have so many buildings, there's a different system that we can do it. It's called JOC, the Job Order Contracting. We're going to try that, too. Or the Construction Manager at Risk, C-MAR. We have done our airport treatment plan. That was with that system. The reason we are talking about it, because we are going to come to you for your review and approval for few projects that are not necessarily the traditional way you see. So you need to know what they are all about and what they're like. With that, I'll bring it to Mr. Oros.
We have one question from Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. Henry.
Yes, sir.
Ultimately, at the end of the day, while I realize that we go out for bids on some of these things, and then by legislative command, we can pick this or pick that, we can't pick sometimes who we choose. But ultimately, who's responsible to inspect and make sure we're getting the quality that we expect for the dollars?
I believe Mr. Oros will address that, but ultimately, city is responsible to make sure everything is done accordingly. But city works with other partners. If there's a designer involved, we work with them, and if it's a contractor involved, we work with them. We also have either our own inspection, which makes us fully responsible for inspection, or outside inspection, because we don't have enough staff. However, if we hire outside inspector, still, we are fully responsible for that.
Thank you very much. And some of the projects that are going on throughout the city today, including the road resurfacing and stuff, we're in the process of inspecting and re-inspecting?
We are.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And one more thing to amplify on that. As part of our operating system, we also have a quality assurance and quality control systems that are in place, that we hire specialists to ensure that the materials we're getting meet our specs, the application is per the specifications, in support of our inspection staff. So that's the other part of the process. See if I get the right button here. Yes. Okay, as Henry said, we wanted to brief the council on the various options we have to deliver our capital program. And there's four generic delivery systems. The first one is the Design Bid Build system, which is the most common that we've seen for most of our projects. It's where we hire a designer, then we put the project out to bid, look at, get the bids in, take the low bid, and then go build it with the contractor. In 2000, in the state, the state statute authorized three alternate project delivery methods, and we'll spend some time on those because they're used less often, but in the right projects, they're the most efficient way to deliver a project. The first one we'll talk about is a Design Build option. What that does is that it blends the designer and the contractor together in the beginning, and we move forward with the project designing and constructing it. We'll expand on that in a minute. Another one is the Construction Manager at Risk type delivery system, where we hire a construction manager, and then that manager deals with the design consultants and contractor, and we work through the construction manager. And then the last area is Job Order Contracting. This is set up for a very quick project delivery, and we'll explain how that works in a few minutes as well. Always good to have a few pictures, even though they're just blocks, but these show the relationships between the city, the designer, and the contractor in the various design delivery options here. In the upper left is the traditional system that we use most frequently, where city works directly with a designer consultant, and then we take that project out to bid, and then we work directly with the contractor. The designer and contractor only talk through the city. In the Design Build arrangement, we have a single contract with a design builder, which has the design professional and the contractor that's going to be building the project. Those projects work in two phases, the pre-construction phase and then the construction phase. Those types of projects are good when we have either complex construction processes or there's a lot of unknowns, and we bring the contractor in early into the design, and they work collaboratively to develop a project for us. Then on the C-MAR, or the Construction Manager at Risk delivery option, the city hires a construction manager, and then the construction manager selects the design and construction contractor with the oversight of the city, but they manage the design team to deliver the project.
Steve, can you give us examples of each one of these?
Sure. I was, that's in the process here, but we can throw a few things in here. The Design Bid Build, you've seen several of those, the Smoke Tree, the Zone 16 Tank and Pump Station project, our sidewalk project, our pavement management preservation program. Those are all where we, you see a design contract come before you, and then at some point in the future, you get a construction contract coming before you. A Design Build, we haven't used that process for a long time, if we have ever, but we're bringing two projects in the next few months to council for consideration, and one of them is for our SCADA system, which is the electronic communication system between our water facilities and the central station, wastewater facilities and central station, how they communicate, and so there's a lot of moving parts, there's a lot of things on the fly. Our system, in that case, the communication system is either none in some instances to something that was in 20 years ago, 15 years ago, 10 years ago, five years ago. There's a mishmash of communication systems, not a real efficient way to manage our water infrastructure and wastewater infrastructure, but this, that type of project lends itself to Design Build, where we bring the contractor in with the designer, and they can collaborate in how to develop our communication system consistently, and also to move it forward into future infrastructure projects. The other Design Build project that we're going to be bringing forward is our well rehabilitation program, where we're looking at our water production wells in the Chino Valley area, and we're looking at how the well is constructed right now, how is it performed over the years, are there equipment upgrades that are needed, are the buildings to code, to our current code, and to our current functions. So there's a lot of moving parts in that type of project, so that's one we're bringing forward, because we think there's a lot of benefit to doing, bringing the contractor in early. On the C-MAR, Construction Manager at Risk, Henry mentioned the wastewater treatment facility out at the airport. That was a project, $40 million project, very large project, and also the Granite Dell's Parkway Interchange on 89A, the one out east of 89, on 89A. That was built using a C-MAR process as well. Again, about a $20 million project, and that's kind of, you're seeing the areas where, you know, many, many millions of dollars of projects. It's very complex, a lot of moving parts. Sometimes you want to start the design or the construction process early, because there's certain elements that can get built early. Design Build, you have a lot more moving parts, you don't have all the knowledge right at the beginning, and you want that contractor knowledge early. So those are kind of some examples of the types of projects that fit in each of those. Thank you. Sure.
Can we have a question from Mayor Protem?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
Sir.
Steve, something as critical to the community is water.
Yes.
Our water system.
Mm-hmm.
Our storage system, our delivery system, blah de blah de blah. It makes me just a little nervous to say we're going to use something we've never used before. What we do know is that we're not happy with what we've been doing. With something like our, wouldn't we be better apprised to try something we've never done before on something not quite as critical as our water?
Good question and observation. The process has been around for, since 2000. So a lot of the contractors we work with, a lot of the design consultants we work with, especially on some of these specialized projects, have done numerous projects of this type. In looking at the well rehab process, we're going to be looking at one well at a time, and our, in the process of delivering that project, we're very cognizant of our water usage throughout the year, and we, in fact, we just had a meeting this morning about the timing of that well rehab project. We're going to be looking at doing some exploratory work this down season, which is during the winter, have everything back up operational during the summer, and the next year at this time, when the demand is lower, then we can take that water well offline, do the maintenance, get it tuned up, and then move on to the next well. So we have a lot of safeguards in place, and these aren't new construction processes. We're not experimenting with something that no one's ever done before. It's just how we deliver the project. It's just bringing the contractor together with the designer to evaluate the project and come up with a good solution.
You did, you did a good explanation of that reasoning, the fact that we're not reinventing the wheel.
No.
We're using a wheel differently than what we've used before.
Correct.
And thank you for doing it the way you did it.
Sure.
Councilwoman Orr.
Okay, go ahead, Henry, then I'll ask my questions.
No, if I can add, Mayor Protem, in addition to what Mr. Oros mentioned, as you all know, our water and wastewater system are the most complicated in the state of Arizona, if not the entire nation. Frankly, you know, SCADA, you know, S-C-A-D-A, called System Control and Data Acquisition. Basically, we have 120, 30, 40 lift station and pump stations that are all remote. We couldn't possibly, you know, watch them all the time manually unless we have a great reliable system. We don't have that expertise. In fact, there are very, very few people in the nation who have this kind of expertise. The reason Design Build, which is not a new system, I've used it before, it would be beneficial in this case because of complication. If we go design, you know, and construct with different people, be a lot of finger pointing, frankly. The designer would put the blame on the contractor, and if it doesn't work, the contractor would put the blame on the design, and it can become very, even more complicated than necessarily. This is why, because of us, we have one entity, basically, whom we choose going to do the design and the build, so any issues, they need to take care of it, not put the city in the middle. This is really the main reason. Like you, I am also very, very concerned about our water and reliability. We are working hard to get in there, but we don't have the system, and just recently, something failed, that we didn't necessarily find out about it until one of our tanks ran out of water. We never want to get there.
Thank you, Henry. I understand it's through meetings like this, we have an opportunity to communicate with our residents, with the public, explaining why we're doing what we're doing, why we're being shown what we're being shown, et cetera. So sometimes while the questions may seem a little bit naive and/or redundant, understand we're in a different situation. I'm a jeweler. I'm not a Public Works guy. I don't go out there and lay bricks or any of this stuff. That's not what I do. But I do communicate with the people that have asked me to sit here, and thank you very much for explaining it the way you guys did.
Thank you, Councilwoman. We do appreciate your question, because you're correct. For the public, they need to get a little bit more detail. Thank you.
So Steve, I'm just curious, what we're typically used to is the design, the bid. We take the lowest bid.
Correct.
Usually. And, but on the other two, the Design Build, it talks about the guaranteed maximum price.
I'm going to get to that in one quick second.
Okay. And then how do you choose, how do you choose the contractor, then? You just go to the expertise, or so you have several people that?
Okay.
Because it's not based on price.
Yeah. Good question.
We have one more question from Councilwoman Wilcox.
Sorry, Steve. You'll probably get to this, too.
Sure.
Who develops the specifications, and how do we know we're not being sold a Ferrari when we could get by with a Ford?
Good questions. And we'll talk about that in just a minute here, so let's move forward. The difference between the various methods that we have available to us is the level of collaboration between the designer consultant, the city, and the contractor. We have different kind of relationships and different ways we work together. Another element is who controls the schedule. The city has, you know, we can set parameters and for cost and schedule, but when we work with some of these other alternative systems, we work more together on developing the cost. We work together on developing the schedule. In our traditional system, we tell the consultant, you have nine months to deliver this design. You have 120 days to build this, Mr. Contractor. In a Design Build or a C-MAR relationship, we work together, and to come up with, is 120 days too long, which would, which would have been our estimate, or maybe it's 150 days for construction. So we work more collaboratively versus just based on our experience in one area. So that's some of the other things. And the other primary difference is how we manage contracts. In the Design Bid Build system, there's usually two contracts, one with a design consultant that the city has, and the other is with the contractor. When we go to a Design Build type of delivery system, we have one contract with a Design Build team. Similarly, with the C-MAR type arrangement, we have one contract with the Construction Manager at Risk, and then they bring the contract, the design and construction contract to us for approval. And in the Job Order Contracting or JOC system, we have a predetermined pricing structure already set up for a service, and we just call up and say, we need 15 of these, or 150 millimeter feet of that, and we deliver the project that way. Going back to your questions about how do we determine who we select for these projects, and also, how much do we pay for them? When we go out for qualification-based selection, which is the key for the, they call it the left three, is we ask for qualifications, what have you done at other agencies or other places in the state, similar to the type of work we're asking for. We evaluate your qualifications, and then sometimes we need to do interviews if we have two people that are close, and then we select a firm based on their qualifications for the design process. When we're using that process, we also have the plans repaired, and we send those out to the construction community, and we say, how much do you charge for this project, and how much do you charge, and then we pick the low bid based on that process. In the Design Build and C-MAR delivery systems, through that collaboration, working with the contractor, the designer, and the city, we come up with something called a guaranteed maximum price. We work together on developing the details for the project, the specifications, and say, okay, based on what you're asking us to build and design, we're going to guarantee it's not going to be more than X. And then we approve that. And then it's up to the design team and the contractor to deliver the project within that price. There's virtually no change orders, short of something that was not known to anybody at all, or something changes midstream. So those are the different elements of that. Another question that I heard was regarding specifications. Are we specifying a Ford and getting a Ferrari? Something like that. Again, in the Design Bid Build process, we're kind of in control of the specifications. We review what the designer comes up with. We have our standard specifications of what we have proven over time that work in our agency, and then we move forward with that. In the Design Build and the C-MAR type arrangements, we give parameters of what we want. We want the system to last 30 years. We want it to be low maintenance. We want it to be this or that, and we kind of give more broad specifications of what we would like. We want a car to get us from A to B. Well, you can have quite a selection. So we work collaboratively to identify what the best solution is that meets everybody's goals. So it's, you've heard it a couple times, there's more conversation between designer consultant or designer contractor and city as we look at those other two delivery methods. So we kind of went through, oh, and then the JOC program is, Job Order Contracting is kind of its own little animal. It's similar to what we brought to you a month or so ago, the on-call contracts we have for design. This is a similar on-call arrangement for construction elements. Very similar type process where we say, we send out a laundry list of how much do you charge for repairing sidewalk panels, so many square feet, or how much do you charge for repairing roof systems? You know, there's a whole variety of options that the Job Order Contracting system works for beyond Public Works. Our facilities department could use a Job Order Contracting system to deliver some of the things that they do. So it's more of a concept. We, that's one of our goals in the next one to two years, is to develop a JOC, Job Order Contracting program for the city to help us deliver smaller projects, straightforward projects, much more efficiently, and that's the goal of all of these programs. What's in it for us? We took a look at the four varieties that we have of project delivery systems. In the Design Bid Build, it's a proven system. It's been around for years. Everyone's very used to it, and we can, we know what to expect as we use that system. As we look at the Design Build or the Construction Manager at Risk projects, there's fewer changes, because we have the contractor talking to the consultant under contract with each other, and they have to work together. We know the exact maximum price when we use some of those other systems. We look at better long-term operations and maintenance when we look at a C-MAR, because that's where you can mandate, we need a system that has these certain operations and maintenance characteristics. But as we move to some of those other delivery systems, we give up a little bit of our control, which in some cases, there's plus and minuses to that. You know, obviously, we are the city, and we're holding the contract with everybody, but we let the contractor and consultant dictate the schedule a little bit. We let, you know, we don't hold it tight. We're kind of holding it together. In the Design Bid Build system, we control everything. We, but we don't have control over the low bid. We don't know what a project's going to come in at. We have estimates. We have historic bids, but given the season of construction, we may get prices that are a little bit higher. We may get prices that are a little bit lower overall. When we go to the guaranteed maximum price, we know exactly the maximum budget. So there's varieties of benefits for each of the types of systems. Our last slide is probably what's on your mind, which system's the best? And the answer, I think we joked about yesterday, was it depends, because for small routine, very specific, well-defined projects, a Job Order Contracting type of delivery system is very quick, efficient, get in, get it done, get out, and pay for it, and everything's processed. Not all projects fit in that category. In the traditional Design Bid Build, your basic meat and potatoes type projects, the things that we know, we're replacing a water line, we're replacing a sewer line, we're building a water tank system, we're upgrading a pump station, we know what, what the parameters are, there's not too many unknowns, we know exactly how they work, we just need somebody to prepare the plans, basically. Design Bid Build works very, very well, and that's why you see majority of our projects coming to you in that delivery system. Then we get into the Design Build area of type projects. Sometimes if there's a lot of unknowns, or we want the knowledge of a construction contractor coming to the table at the same time we're designing it, because a designer can say, this is a great box, but if the contractor can't build it for a variety of reasons, it's just a nice box on paper, and we can't really use it. And that's where that collaboration between the contractor and the consultant works very well. And we talked about the examples of those projects already. Then we get to the larger, complex projects, such as a wastewater treatment facility, a highway interchange, many millions of dollar type projects, and in a lot of cases, that type of delivery system is very good when you want to expedite construction of a certain element. You don't need to have the whole thing designed to start, so you can deliver the project quicker that way, is that you, you know you have your mass grading, a rough grading of a site. You can start that process now. You don't have to wait till everything is designed for the structures and everything, because you know you're going to have to level certain things, so you can get that moving. So you can deliver a project quicker than if you did a Design Bid Build process. So there's a variety of options for projects, and as we go through our capital program, and we're starting to identify the specific project and get it moving, we look at the delivery options and say, which one's the best fit for this type of project? And then we look at, do we use an on-call consultant, or do we go out for a competitive qualifications type selection? So we have a lot of tools, and that was the goal of today's presentation, is to give you a peek into our toolbox, so that when you have another project that comes forward, and we talk about Design Build, you'll have a general idea of how this project is going to be delivered. So if there's any other questions, we'd be glad to answer them.
Question comments from the council? Well, it seems to me that what you're trying to do here is, with these new options, is to get greater efficiency.
Absolutely.
Completion of the project.
Yes.
Looks like there's a possibility of reduced cost.
Yes, and that's always on our mind.
Reduction of time from start to finish in getting projects completed, is that correct?
Those are all the goals of, each of these options is designed to meet those goals, yes.
Okay.
Steve, just a question.
Sure.
In terms of C-M at Risk and Design Build, I've done projects where you get a maximum guaranteed price, and then the parties negotiate if there's any savings on that price. Both the city and the contractor can benefit, i.e., like if you said the job's going to be $10 million, but you value engineer it, there's the option or the idea that both entities could value engineer and come off of that number and split the savings. Is that allowable in Arizona as well?
To my understanding, yes.
So that's a real advantage, is once you establish a guarantee maximum price, there's a relationship between the contractor and the city, that if you see savings or the opportunity to tweak the project, you can work out a relationship where both you and the contractor benefit, and the guaranteed maximum price comes down.
Councilman Blair?
The only one comment, and I've made this comment before, on the small Job Order Contracting, and I've been assured that we wouldn't continue to use the same designer, that we would move it around. I have a problem when it's, when it's a single source, that sometimes that single source in the marketplace gets used over and over and over again without fair competition with the other companies. And as I've been told and assured by Public Works, that by valuing the different things that those folks that those folks do, that those people would be rotated and moved around.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
That is very correct.
Mayor Brodmann?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to echo a little bit about, go back to something that Gene said a little earlier. Having sat here for a while, having gone through a whole bunch, a whole litany of change orders, whether it was water, whether it was sewer, whether it was streets, buildings, a lot of it has to do with bid specifications.
That's correct.
And ultimately, if I hear you correctly, Steve, our personnel that work for the city put up, put forward the specs. This is what we want. Right?
That is correct.
All right, so ultimately, it's to the council to hold our staff accountable for the specs if the specs fall short of what we're looking for.
Yes.
We, okay. We have a new city manager coming on board.
On board.
All right? There's been, there's been, from time to time, like I said, you don't have to be a genius to know in town, like Prescott, we have rocks under the dirt. We have, we've been told before, we didn't know we had rocks under the dirt. That was a good reason for a change order. We know that we have springs at the base of the hills. We know that we have heave. We know that Willow Creek Road or Copper Basin Road, a couple of times a year, you have freeze.
Mm-hmm.
All right?
Yes.
So when we go into projects and we start asking for certain things to be accomplished, the specifications need to be clear to the contractor to where we don't hear, well, that isn't what was asked for.
Correct.
Right?
And one of the things that we've been doing in Public Works in the past two years is that we've been reviewing and revamping the specifications, taking out ambiguity questions, and being very specific on what we want constructed and what we want delivered, and what are we getting for our dollars. We're also amping up our research and the design process. You'll see some projects that seem to be a little expensive on the, when you look at the dollars, but we're doing a lot more subsurface, underground verification of pipes, where they are, what's this type of soil, is it one solid rock underneath, or is there some pockets of rock? We're doing a lot more investigative on the design side in our current scheme of how we evaluate project designs. So you're seeing fewer and fewer of these change orders coming before you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Okay, thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Adam B.
Adam B., discussion direction regarding adoption of a residential vacation rental ordinance.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm going to present from here. I'm going to get a little, I'm going to do, before we start the actual draft ordinance, I want to do a little video. It's from a TV show called Adam Ruins Everything. And it actually is an interesting discussion about the Airbnb problem or concept as used in cities. I think it may be sort of informative to kind of lay the groundwork for some of the issues that vacation rentals may pose in the city. So I'll let, I'll let this run. It runs about six or seven minutes.
There's two. Was it about this one or the one at the?
This one, yeah.
Okay.
Here we go. Okay. That's, again, a brief, just kind of a brief overview of what some of the problems that are created by, and again, this is not to sort of pick on Airbnb, there are a lot of online vacation rental companies, but some of the problems that exist with vacation rentals when they go unregulated. Unfortunately, nobody, this, this episode or this TV show didn't air before the legislature decided to tell us that we have to allow vacation rentals in the city as effect of January 1. So up currently, the city, Prescott, doesn't allow vacation rentals, in other words, 29 days or fewer rentals per month, in a month, in residential neighborhoods. But that all changes on January 1 when we're mandated to make the change and to allow vacation rentals in residential zones. So, switch over on this one. Button right. Here.
Hit the one that's stuck, Cam.
Oh, okay.
Uh-oh. Tech problems.
There we go. Okay. So, zoom now a little bit. There we go. So what we've come up with is a draft ordinance for your discussion today, no action to be taken, that creates a layer of regulation specifically for vacation rental type uses. Now, we already currently regulate, as does the health department, you know, commercial transient lodging, like hotels, motels, B&Bs, you know, business, commercial-type hotel-type uses. So this draft ordinance, or this ordinance, would not affect or would not regulate what's already being regulated. This is specific to vacation rentals primarily in residential zones. However, it's not specifically limited to residential zones. There are a few homes, a few houses in commercial zones that are used as vacation rentals. Those are legal under the zoning, but they're not regulated by any type of regulation. So this would, in its current form, include, sort of sweep those in. There are a few homes in the downtown area, for instance, that people do use as vacation rentals. Again, legal under the zoning, but not regulated. So the draft ordinance, which you all got with the packet, again, just to clarify, doesn't regulate hotels, motels, inns, timeshare units, and those kinds of things. We include a number of definitions. Important is the bedroom definition, we'll get to it in a little bit. Again, other definitions. So what we start off with the regulation is, we require a registration certificate, essentially similar to a license or permit to operate a vaca, yes, sir?
Thank you. Did I miss something? When you said that the state legislature is mandated that throughout the city limits of Prescott, that every residential neighborhood, every residential unit is now available for commercial use?
In theory, that's correct. In other words, right.
That's what I thought you said. So what I don't understand yet, and you may come up with a reason, if indeed that's the truth, if the heavy hand of government from Phoenix has now declared all of the city of Prescott a commercial zone, why can't we regulate every house in Prescott like we regulate every hotel in Prescott?
Well, this ordinance will regulate vacation rentals specifically as vacation rentals. So...
Well, I just thought you said everything in Prescott is a vacation rental, or could theoretically be used. Just because somebody's not telling you for tax purposes doesn't mean it's not happening.
So the, our current zoning, current land development code prohibits 29-day or less rental in a residential zone. In other words, the intent is, is to use a house, single-family home, an apartment, a condo, a townhome, on a, either a month-to-month or an annual rental for your sort of typical or traditional residential use. In the past, studies like Prescott, Sedona, other cities around the state have banned less than 29-day rentals. In other words, the vacation-type rentals. Doesn't mean that it doesn't occur. I mean, we had a statistic, still need some verification. We have, based on an online research, we could have currently 165 unregulated, essentially illegal vacation rentals already in the city. So it's already here. This statute, this Airbnb bill that was pushed through the legislature last session is requiring us to now, to now allow vacation rentals, fewer than 20-day, 29-day rentals in our residential zones. So the purpose of this ordinance is to acknowledge that since we're going to have to allow those, the question for the council is, is do you want to allow those unregulated, or do you want to have some level of reasonable regulation to maintain the health, safety, and welfare of the renter, of the vacation renters, of the neighborhoods, of the neighbors surrounding that vacation rental? And that's what this ordinance would do.
Councilman Lozal.
Thank you, Mayor. John, just to clarify, when the state did pass this new law, in that law, did it stipulate that we, as a community, are allowed to write certain regulations allowing it?
Yeah. We are required to allow it, and we can regulate basic health, safety, welfare, zoning-type regulations.
We just, we're not allowed to not allow it.
Right. We're not allowed to prohibit it.
Okay.
That, and so that's, that's where, in discussing this, because, because they become, whether we change our land development code or not, on Janu, you know, before January 1, that code prohibition essentially becomes null and void by way of state law. So the state's preempted the field on this particular issue. So if we, if we don't adopt this type of regulation to go into effect before January 1, essentially, vacation rent, at least the current vacation rentals become unregulated.
And that state statute, in that statute, we can't over-regulate it to where it's burdensome to the person?
Correct. Correct. And I think what you'll see here when we go through this is, these are relatively reasonable regulations. They aren't overly burdensome. We require a registration, a certificate of registration. It essentially tells us, you know, it's one, it's one step more than simply getting a business license. We require the vacation rentals to obtain a business license, to obtain a state or city TPT license, because they are subject to both their TPT as well as the bed tax. And then we'll also require a registration-type permit to get some additional information so that we can properly regulate or make contact with, for instance, the local contact people, whether there's a property manager, those kinds of things. So if there is a problem, we can have some of an immediate response.
Other than registration, I've talked to a vacation rental company that has since, you know, in the past, operated illegally, obviously, in Prescott, looked at this, your ordinance, and these are things they're doing already.
And that, and again, you know, I don't want to compare this, although it's sort of a natural, I don't want to compare this to our structure-sover-living ordinance, but, you know, I think that that's, that part of the comparison is fair, that good operators, that responsible operators of vacation rentals are already going to do this kind of stuff. This is not going to be overly burdensome. This is, again, setting kind of the minimum standard for operations. Certainly, if, if operators, if vacation rental operators, whether it's an individual or individual, single home that they own, or if it's a company, you know, we want them to have, there has to be, or the idea of this, of this ordinance is, there is a minimum standard or minimum set of regulations. Certainly, operators can exceed those, just like any business can exceed the minimum government regulation.
Councilman Blair?
How is it going to be handled, for the sake of full disclosure, if somebody were to sell their house on the real estate market in a residential zone and they've had an Airbnb in their house? Is that going to show up on a report, title report? How is that going to be?
Probably not. It's not...
Because if I'm moving into a neighborhood, and I want to know what that neighborhood's makeup is, I'm going to want to know if there's been an Airbnb there.
There is, there is a notice requirement within 300 feet that the, that the operator has to provide notice within, to all residential units within 300 feet, based on the county assessor information. So that'll be on, that'll be a requirement, it's currently in the draft, of a 300-foot notice requirement. It's not going to be recorded at the county recorder, though. So part of it will have to be, currently at least, the due diligence of the...
Buyer.
Of the buyer to see if the home they're buying has a notice from one of the neighbors within 300 feet that they're using that residence as a vacation rental.
I just find it a slap in the face to people in residential neighborhoods that are spending their livelihood and their money on a residential house to not only get a sober home, or an alcohol home, or Airbnb, and no protection to the common-day person that's buying a home.
Well, that's, again, that's the intent, is to set a set of regulations, minimum standards to operate, so it at least minimizes the impact of the actual use of the home if it's a vacation rental. It's not going to prohibit that vacation rental. It, you know, we saw on the video, it can change the character of a neighborhood if a large percentage of homes are used as vacation rental in a single-family residential area. It really can change the character of the neighborhood from a residential zone to something that's something in the middle of, between residential and commercial.
Now, I hope the city managers are listening because we're enacting another law for the state of Arizona in the city of Prescott's charter. That means that we need to be looking at our budget to look at another code enforcement officer to oversee the Airbnb that the government's now put on our lap. And we keep getting these things. We got, we got one guy, and now all of a sudden, I can see we need three or four people.
And, and again, sort of by analogy, without trying to bring in the structure-sover-living discussion, a lot of the structure-sover-living discussion is a function of the federal law, the Fair Housing Act, that we have a limited ability to regulate. So a lot of these things, make it real clear, this is not something that the city is initiating on its own or deciding to, these are sort of situations that are foisted upon us by state and federal legislature, and this is a response to that. The policy discussion, decision is, is do you want to adopt some reasonable regulations that are essentially minimum standards, or do you want to allow for unregulated vacation rentals? There is no choice, let me get real clear, there is no choice whether or not we allow vacation rentals. That's been required, that's required of us. We have to allow them. So the question is, is do we want to adopt regulation to at least set some minimum performance or behavior standards?
Do we have enough teeth in this regulation to where you have an operator that's operating illegally to stop this stuff from happening?
Well, I, let me go through it, and you tell me if you think there's enough teeth. Because, because the requirement is that no owner of vacation rentals shall rent, shall rent, you know, shall be a vacation operator without this rental registration certificate. So if there are violations of the ordinance, that registration certificate can be revoked, and there's a, there'll be a due process to that, but that can be revoked. And if they, if an operator continues to operate, once that certificate's revoked, then we would have an ability to either civilly cite by code enforcement, criminally cite if it's, you know, if it amounts to misdemeanor, or go to Superior Court and get an injunction. So we, so those are our, I guess, big leverage tools. If there is a, an operator who just simply doesn't follow the rules and is a continual violator, we do have tools that we can revoke the certificate, at which point then we can cite or sue.
I can appreciate that. I also see as more cops, more code enforcement people, so...
Well, I think, you know, again, not to get ahead of ourselves, but part of the discussion at the voting meeting will be the ordinance we talked about last time, about civil citation by code enforcement, which, again, will take the load off of the police officers. But, but I think it's a fair discussion to have at this afternoon's meeting, is talking about whether there is a need for increasing the capacity of our code enforcement people.
Thank you.
Councilman Hor.
John, can, although the city cannot prohibit, can neighborhood groups such as Yavapai Hills or homeowner associations such as Prescott Lakes, can they limit or set their own standards?
Well, this, this Airbnb bill that was passed doesn't affect CCNRs. So if there are CCNRs in subdivisions or homeowner groups that have rules that are adopted already that prohibit less than a 29-day or less than a 30-day rental, those can be enforced, but not by the city. Those are enforced by the homeowner association, by the homeowners who are benefiting from the CCNRs. We aren't a party, 90% of the time, 99% of the time, we aren't a party to the CCNRs. There's a couple of weird nuances, but we, so we don't have the ability to, we don't enforce CCNRs, we don't have the authority to, but, you know, yes.
But they can.
So if there are CCNRs in place that have been actively enforced, and the homeowner association hasn't sat on its hands while these vacation rentals are going on, then there is, there is, that is an option or an opportunity, but again, it's not a, it's not a city function.
Councilman Chiskin.
And John, are these places going to be subject to the business license tax, to bed tax, and other applicable fees?
Business license, plus fee. TPT license, so they, which means, because it's a, it falls into our transient use, transient occupancy, it's both TPT and bed tax. As I mentioned in our council report, there are actually going to be three ordinances for adoption purposes. One is this one, the other one will be an amendment to land development code to make those sort of technical changes, housekeeping changes. And then the third will be to make it clear in our building safety code... that vacation rentals will also be subject to the same types of inspections that, for instance, are structured sober living homes and other types of commercial uses are subject to in terms of a building, safety, fire inspection, and that accompanying fee, which I think is $485? $400? Okay, so $400, so annually. So they will be inspected. I mean, again, in the video, we saw, you know, not-working smoke detectors, CO, carbon monoxide detectors, you know, exits, those kinds of things. Our building safety people will be able, as part of this package, will be able to inspect those before we issue the certificate, to make sure that they meet minimum building safety standards that are different than, or greater than, I guess, than a typical, single-family residential use, because they are, in effect, a commercial use. So the package of ordinances that will come forward will include that.
Thank you. Councilwoman Wilcox?
I have a bunch of questions, but I'd like to hear your presentation first, because you might answer some along the way.
All right, well, I'm
Got one more, Mayor Protim?
Okay.
Thank you, I'm probably going to do the same as Gene and acquiesce to you. Move on, but I do have some questions.
Okay, all right, so, again, we're going to require, the ordinance would require a rental registration certificate and a company application. The ordinance would allow for an operator to have essentially a property manager agency, exclusive agency, which is Councilman Lozal referred to. I mean, there are companies that will operate multiple homes for vacation rental. They don't own them, it's essentially a real estate broker, property management-type company that will be essentially our local contact for issues. So, again, application-wise, these are some of the things we're going to require for the rental registration certificate. These are things we're going to ask to be supplied to the city in order to issue that permit. Some critical ones are 24-hour phone number and local contact person, so that if there is a problem with the rental that the neighbors can call. It also contemplates, again, this is kind of a, will be a staffing issue, some sort of hotline, 24-hour hotline, that neighbors can call and complain, short of calling the police. And then the hotline would call the local contact person, you need to fix this problem, otherwise you're subject to citation. So it's sort of, again, a shortcut, rather than calling, you know, dispatch or 911 if there's a noise problem. Doesn't prevent people from calling police or dispatch if there are significant problems, but if there are just sort of annoying-type activities going on, and somebody doesn't want to call the police, one option is to create a hotline for neighbors to call if there are problems with the vacation rental. This mirrored on Lake Havasu City ordinance in a lot of ways. We sort of started with that, looked at some others. Obviously, Lake Havasu City is a huge rental, vacation rental community, especially in the wintertime, not so much the summer, I suspect, since it's 140 degrees there usually. But, so, again, lays out the requirements, the documents, then the submittal requirements for the vacation rental, requires a valid business license for the vacation rental, number of bedrooms, and evidence of TPT license. So there will be a fee that the city could adopt, again, by resolution, to administer the license review and application process. We have provisions for revocation or denial. If their owner has prior bad record, we have the ability to deny that license if there are problem owners that continue to apply. In other words, if an owner had a problem before and had a license or permit revoked, we have the ability to deny that operator
Under state statute?
Yes.
Okay.
Again, and it's not an automatic denial, it's the authority to deny, and that's going to be an issue with, you know, discretion and applying things reasonably and properly. If there are, if information's not provided properly, again, could result in a revocation or denial. I think paragraph E is critical. Like all properties, in the city of Prescott, the property must maintain in full compliance with all building codes, municipal code, and the land development code. And again, part of the package of ordinances, you'll see, will be a building code tweak that allows, that requires that the vacation rentals are inspected to determine actual occupancy allowed of the home, and making sure that there are the basic health, safety, fire code standards are met. So then we go into the occupation, or the operational requirements. Ultimately, the owner's responsible to make sure that his or her tenants, his or her renters comply with the laws. It always comes back to the owner of the property. And I just want to remind you, we also have other tools in the toolbox. We have disruptive property ordinance, we have noise ordinances, we have disorderly conduct laws. We have, you know, we have a lot of other tools. This isn't the exclusive remedy for a problem. This is just one more sort of, gives us one more tool to, in making sure that if vacation renters are going to come, and they are, that we have the ability to sort of manage and maintain the disruptive nature in the neighborhood. So we talk about maximum occupancy, and it's, what's proposed is minimum of two people. So if it's a studio, apartment, or whatever, it's two people. Then with every bedroom beyond that, it's additional two more people. So let me show you the math here. So if it's zero bedrooms, you get two people. If it's one bedroom, you get two, plus two for the bedroom, so four people, and so on and so forth. It's a little bit more lenient than what I think some people in the building safety department want to see, but I think this is probably more consistent with what the statute lets us do, which is, you know, if we limit it, I'll give you, for instance, right now, our structured sober living zoning ordinances and building ordinances say basically two people per bedroom, but it's also reflective of the size of the bedroom, plus one house manager, one person. So this is two plus two, essentially. But this doesn't take into account size of the bedroom, whereas our building code for community residences would allow for three or four people in a bedroom if the bedroom met the right size dimensions. So this is just a hard number, and it's easy to calculate, so we don't have to do dimensions and figure things out. Again, we're requiring 24/7 availability of a local contact person in case there are problems. Not only is the owner responsible, local contact person is also responsible. It could be one and the same, it doesn't have to be two different people. Local contact person's going to have some of the, I guess, on-the-ground requirements, making sure that trash cans are properly stored in accordance with city statute, noise levels aren't exceeded according to city statute, and that the occupants, the renters of the vacation rental, when they occupy, they are familiarized with the rules and regulations that apply. And that will be the responsibility of the local contact person, whether it's the owner, whether it's an agent, or whether it's somebody else. We're also looking for, again, similar to, similar to our structured sober living, we're looking for good neighbor brochure. In other words, you know, it's an unfortunate sort of reality that, you know, we're going to require people to have something in writing telling you how to be a good neighbor when you're on vacation. But I think it's probably better safe than sorry, because you can't necessarily rely on people's good judgment, so we're going to have them put together a good neighbor policy, or a good neighbor brochure. I actually missed a page here. One of the things I think is important, as far as local contact person, is this provision that the local contact person, upon notification, is required to make response in a timely and appropriate manner. So that means that if somebody complains to the local contact person about noise or other disturbances, they have to respond by telephone within 30 minutes, they have to respond in person by 45 minutes, or if we determine that a hotline is a good, a city hotline is a good idea, they have to respond within 45 minutes of a hotline call as well. So, and then what we could do is sort of data-track that to see if the owner, operator, or contact person is complying with those responses as needed. In other words, we'll get, we'll do follow-up to see if a particular operator is actually responsive. Because I think the problem, the problems that can exist with vacation rentals are, it can be spikes in noise, there's music, loud talking, and things like that. And I think that is, in and of itself, is not necessarily what the neighbors object to. It's when it's ongoing and persistent. So if there is a call, it can be dealt with in a relatively short time, a half hour, and that should, you know, should address, I think, concerns. I think it's the ongoing, long, you know, hours and hours of loud noise, loud music, you know, those kinds of things, that really sort of just can be the disturbance to the neighborhood. But if there are spikes in noise, then the neighbors will have the ability, should have the knowledge of being able, knowing who to call. That's where the 300-foot notice requirement on this ordinance will also provide not only that the residence is used as a vacation rental, but also the local contact or other contact information, so that the neighbors know who they can call. And so, you know, again, I think this has been, you had this in your pack, and I think you've had a chance to look at it. It is a, I think it's a balance between being too heavy-handed and having no regulation. We're trying to find that balance, because the challenge is, is the state sort of told us we have to allow vacation rentals, then gave us very vague direction about how much we could regulate. So I think this type of ordinance, which we've looked at other cities that allow for vacation rentals, but also regulate them in Arizona, so we've sort of modeled this after those types of ordinances, you know. And it could be another one where we may need to take a relook at, at some period in time to see how it's working. This is not too new, or too unique. Like I said, we've sort of modeled it after other local ordinances, but, you know, I think it's a, what we did, what we tried to do is find that balance between no regulation and something that probably wouldn't pass state muster. So at that point, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Councilman Blair?
I guess there's a lot of questions I'm sure everybody's going to have, but another one that comes to mind is a local opportunity to have a clearinghouse through the city that we are aware, meaning the police and the fire department, are aware of where these vacation rentals are. I would hate to think that we send a police officer to a home knowing it's a vacation rental, and they don't know that. I think it's absolutely upon us, if we're going to have this state law, that we keep our officers and our firemen as safe as we can. So we're going to have to have a data bank somehow or another through the city, through police and fire, which means, again, more employees, and I look at this thing with enforcement and everything else as just being an absolute joke, but that's just my opinion.
Well, again, we'll, you know, combining the business license requirement, TPT requirement, plus the permit, the registration certification permit, which will give us more information than simply the address, you know, with contact information, those kinds of things. I think that kind of sweeps up pretty much all the information that we need as a police department, a fire department, code enforcement, building safety, tax and license, to be able to, you know, manage from different directions each of these vacation rentals. But you're right, I mean, that's why, you know, whenever you adopt a sort of licensing or permitting process, you have to charge a fee, because there's a cost associated with it. At the same time, vacation, you know, a house can rent for, let's say, $1,500 a month to a renter, it could rent for $800 or $900 or $1,000 a week on a vacation basis. You know, so you're looking at upwards of $4,000 a month, let's say, versus $1,500. So there is money that's being made on vacation rental, you know, just as a function of the economy. And I think a factor that we all hear is, Prescott has a high occupancy rate of our hotels. So the option for people to come here, you know, is to look at Airbnb and VRBO and some of these other online companies, because that provides an alternative, basically alternate hotel room for people when our occupancy rates are 80, 90, 100% during the summertime.
I'm moving out, because I can store 14 people in my house.
Councilwoman Wilcox?
Okay, several questions. One is about the occupancy. We don't have a definition of person here, and I'm a little concerned that without that definition, we may be discriminating against families with young children, where the children are young enough to be sleeping in the same bedroom or studio as the parents, or pregnant mother, or something like that. So would it be reasonable to define person for the purposes of this ordinance? Something like an individual 16 years of age or older? Because I'm thinking driving age is when you could really start to get into nuisance problems with extra cars. I don't know, it's just something I like
It's an option, in other words, it's an option, what that would create. In other words, if we left the two plus two per bedroom, and you limited that to, you know, adults 18 years or older, or persons 16 years or older, in theory, that could allow for sort of an unlimited number of kids in the home. That's sort of a question for you all, if that's the direction you want to go. I think it gets complicated if you do anything more than that, if you start defining, you know, if they're eight to 16, this many, and zero to eight, this many, and so. Because, again, part of what we're trying to, part of what we try to do here is also keep this as sort of simple and straightforward as possible, too. But, you know, certainly, we can do that if that's the council's direction.
I'm pretty sure a hotel just says how many people are staying in there, so they can charge you. They don't ask the age. If I remember last time I booked a hotel, I just want to know how many.
Typically, yeah, right.
So, I mean, it would be kind of the same thing, they're, just want to know how many. So they're not worried about, I mean, they're just worried about the single number, so it's kind of the same here. I'm guessing.
Okay, it was just a concern that we might be criminalizing families with young children who are renting a Airbnb.
I think the one thing we can sort of conclude from a legal perspective is that vacation rentals don't, you know, vacation renters and rentals don't necessarily get the same, or if at all, Fair Housing Act protection. Now, and as the video showed, you know, the question is, for purposes of the Civil Rights Act, is this considered an accommodation for purposes of ADA and Civil Rights Act and those kinds of things? It's still kind of an unaddressed question. Is if I rent my home out, can I discriminate? Whereas a hotel or a bed-and-breakfast inn would be sued by the Attorney General or the, you know, US Attorney's Office for doing that. It's unclear, that law is sort of unsettled, because up until relatively recently, I mean, vacation rentals have been around for a long time. It's just the online kind of ease of renting has made it, has just blown it up. So, you know, we could look at 12 and above in terms of the number, and have unlimited number of kids, you know, under 12, you know, just to sort of have that, it's up to, we could do that, but I would, if you're going to do that, I would just say one cutoff number for purposes of counting, just, again, for ease of enforcement.
Okay, and then second question was about whether or not we should have parking standards?
Well, parking standards are going to apply. The city, in other words, city code already has, and land development code already has parking standards that currently apply, and those would apply separately.
Even for single-family residents?
For instance, parking on the lawn, or on the, you know, you have to park either on the street or in the driveway. It could fill up, street parking, if there, because a lot of houses, as you know, downtown, don't even have driveways, let alone garages. So, but there is, there are prohibitions about parking other than on the, have to be on either the driveway or the street, currently in our land development code.
Well, one of the standards we could incorporate in the process of issuing the certificate is to ensure that there is adequate off-street parking or on-street parking per bedroom.
That may be a challenge
Okay.
under the statute, because Under the state, under the statute, because we may be able to regulate parking, we may be able to limit, but again, if you're looking, especially the older homes in the downtown area, on my street, I think I'm maybe one of two that has a driveway. And so, you know, that, that is potentially problematic. And I, and I think that one of the things we want to do with this is, is we can always fine-tune it if we start seeing problems. In other words, if we start seeing problems down the road in terms of parking, we can always come back and make some adjustments to it. I don't know right now if there is a parking problem as a result of vacation rental. I mean, the challenge is, is they aren't really legal, but we still try and tax them, but, you know, so, we could, I can, you know, let me talk to community development staff about, about whether there is a sort of reasonable parking standard we could apply to vacation rentals that we don't currently apply to our single-family residential.
Okay. And the third one is enforcement. I'm a little confused, is this, is a violation, a civil violation, subject to a fine, or is it a criminal misdemeanor? And is the violator subject to arrest?
If you go to 498, Section 498, it talks about, it could be a misdemeanor citation.
Right.
However, it, it, it sort of gives a graduation, or gradual type of fact in the ordinance, that if there's a first-time offense, it's a warning, and it can escalate from there.
Well, if you go back further up the page, in 496, must be K, subsection 6, there's a requirement that the local contact person notify the occupant that they may be cited or fined by the city.
Right.
If they're violating.
Right, okay, so, there are, there is a penalty provision for violation of this particular section of the code, but it's not exclusive. So any other code violation or violation of law, state law, for instance, is also subject to separate enforcement. So what this does is, is really put the burden on the local contact person and the owner, or the property manager, to enforce the rules of this particular code. But the renters themselves, if they are creating a disorder, disturbance, if they're, you know, doing something else illegal, you know, they're also subject to separate enforcement actions. And so, what that provision talks about is, if the contact person makes contact with the renters to say, "Look, you guys could be separately cited for noise violations, or just disturbing the peace, disorderly conduct, or whatever else is going on, you know, underage drinking, whatever it might be." So that's kind of that, that notice, you have to tell somebody that you're, that you, vacation renter, are subject to being cited and possibly even arrested, depending on whatever violation they may be doing. Violations of these, of this particular section of the code are really subject to a first-time warning, and it escalates from there, so that it's not just you get cited, you get a civil citation or a misdemeanor citation.
I think it's gonna be pretty hard to enforce this against a temporary visitor. Once they get notification that they might be cited or fined, they're gonna take off the next day.
Well, I think the purpose of this is, is to, is for the contact person to let them know that if the police show up, and you are violating the law, that you are potentially subject to either a civil or criminal citation, perhaps even arrest, depending on what the offense is. And it's sort of a warning to the, to the renter, that, you know, we'll tolerate so much, but if, if the problem persists, you can be separately or individually cited for whatever the violation is. And that's what we want, you know, it's, we want the contact person to be sort of the heavy in this, to go, "Look, knock it off, otherwise you're subject to being cited or arrested." And hopefully, that does the trick, that, that they won't have, that it is, you know, that's, that's kind of the pressure on the renter to behave, in a way that's, you know, conducive to the neighborhood.
Okay, thanks.
Mayor Brodine?
I appreciate the fact this is a work in progress. I didn't miss that, did I, John?
No.
All right. With a work in progress, that means we can still have open dialogue and come up with some concepts, and.
Sure.
We still want to communicate with the people we were elected to serve, you know, the public, you know. Without targeting a particular business class, particular business group, I support the most stringent level of accountability. At the end of the day, the property owner is the one accountable for how their property's being used. It is the property owner, the leaseholder, whatever the case would need, that's accountable for ensuring that the rest of the neighborhood's not being screwed up, because they're allowing their property be misused. So I just want to put that in there, as we go forward and we draft some of these things, you know, it's, it's the person who holds the paper on the property that should be accountable.
Ultimately, that is the case in this ordinance, is that the owner of the property is the ultimate, has the ultimate responsibility for what happens on the property. It's the same with that disruptive property ordinance.
Thank you, I appreciate, I appreciate that, John. If you choose to be in this particular category of business in town, nobody's telling you you can't be.
Right.
But if this happens on your watch, here's what's gonna happen to you.
Right.
Case in point, Prescott Valley, arrest. You can't do some of these things just because you can do this or this, you can't.
Any other questions, comments from the council? Any from the public? Come on down.
Good afternoon, I'm Ralph Hess from Prescott. I really don't have any comments or questions regarding the substance of the ordinance. I do have a question regarding some of the comments that were made at the outset of this agenda item, which is, the state's mandating through state legislation that you not prohibit these types of vacation homes. And, and I'm hard-pressed to see what statewide interest is generating state legislation to interfere with local governance over its zoning of its properties. So my question is, what actions are you, either individually, or through the lobbyist, or through the League of Arizona Cities and Towns, doing legally and politically to stem these preemptive statutes that the state's imposing upon local governments, that appear not to have any statewide interest? So, that's my question.
Paulson, that's probably down your lane.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Hess, council members, Mayor Oberg. We work every year through our lobbyists and through our contacts at the League of Arizona Cities and Towns and other associations that we're members of, to try to make sure that, at the very least, we maintain our local control. It's something we talk about during the session every single year, and it's something that's a concern every year for the league and for other cities and towns, as well as Prescott. So we did work very closely directly with the Airbnb lobbyists during this last year. We were able to get some changes made to that legislation that are less negative, including some of the regulations that are available to us now. But it was very clear, starting from the State of the State speech given by the governor at the beginning of session, that, that some of these, these sharing economy focuses were going to be a really key focus of his administration, and, and things like Uber and Airbnb and reducing regulations that restrict that from happening were, were a key portion of, of that speech that he gave, and this is one of the results of that. So we can do all we can to bob and weave and try to get legislation not passed, but knowing that it was going to occur, knowing that there were the votes to pass it, substantial votes to pass it, we worked to amend and try to include language that would be less damaging for the city of Prescott.
I think we also worked through some of the other cities and their mayors and their councils to try and get the state legislators from those districts to sign on with us and try and help us in the direction that we want to go, is that correct?
That is correct. We do work with our partners across all cities and towns, we have to get to that 1631 and 1, if we don't want something to pass, or if we do want something to pass, and those are hard numbers to achieve, when there's a clear vision to move something forward.
Mr. Mayor, if I could add?
Go ahead.
Ralph, to answer your, to further that query, is at the beginning of every legislative session, Allison gives us several, if not every study session, a legislative update, and we give, we guide her through our lobbyists, and to answer your, what are we doing politically? That's what we do as a body, is we're letting her know to fight that, or let, you know, let's push that one through, or whatnot.
And I would just also add that last year, the city council's decision to add a contract lobbyist who's down in the hallways of the Senate and, and the House in Phoenix, was very impactful in being able to actually impact that legislation last year. So that really was a helpful move, to be able to make those tweaks and changes, and actually stop some legislation from going through.
Okay, thank you, Allison.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I have one question, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I have addressed it with our Attorney General, Mr. Bronavich, and personally, and asked him, you know, we have a lawyer here, and before we can do anything here, we clear with our lawyer, he'll give us guidance for whether it's prudent or appropriate, or whether we might be sued over it, whether it be the Fair Housing Law, where the case may be. The state seems to work a little bit different, and I asked Mr. Bronavich if he didn't sit in on the legislation to look at the possible direct conflicts between city charters and state law, and where that would be a conflict, and the only time the city, only time the Attorney General steps in is when there's a lawsuit. So you almost have to wait until the legislation's completed, and then the city to sue the state of Arizona, to get a ruling from our Attorney General. So he's not acting as a guy that's sitting on the bench like our attorney, which I think's totally wrong, because I think sometimes these laws get enacted without them being fully vetted through the course of the legal actions. And we do it here, but they do not do it to state legislature. So that's the information I would share with everybody here, that it also has, almost has to be a lawsuit against the state of Arizona, addressing the B&amp;B law, and then we sue them, and then the Attorney General makes his recommendation, so, there you go.
And Allison, I think, I remember with HB 2107, I think it had to go through some kind of committee that looked for legal issues, is that correct?
That's correct. The Legislative Council, before legislation's actually submitted, reviews all of the legislation, and then part of the legislative process is to go through the Rules Committee, and so they look for constitutionality and, and conflicting issues and other parts of statute.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, come on down.
Richard Stealman, Prescott. Let me take the high road on this one. I could see where this is gonna really benefit realtors. People who want to retire, want to come to Prescott, they want to stay here for a while, see if it's what they think it is, if they want to move here, because that's one area that we're kind of light. People, when they come here, they might want to just do that. Where are they gonna stay? For two, three, four weeks, wherever the case may be? So that might be an upside to that, because we don't have a lot of housing that way. But there are a lot of people that are gonna retire, and they're looking for places to come to, and, and that's something we experience a lot here in Prescott, is people come here to vacation, and by God, they end up moving here. Happens a lot. My only concern is, and maybe Mr. Palladini can help me out here, is, is that, I don't believe legally we could stop them, but out-of-state people who want to invest buying homes and turning them into B&amp;Bs, and creating what was a neighborhood into a business district, because once something like that gets hold and takes root, people will say, "I don't want to live on this street, I'm out of here, because I got four of them on this street now." And that's the trend, and I don't want to be part of it, and I want to sell. I can get top dollar now to an out-of-state investor who's gonna turn my house into a B&amp;B, I got my money, I'm gone. But the people who still remain behind, we end up living in a, in a street now, that is not what we came to five or 10 years ago. I don't think illegally we could keep people from doing that scenario, but that is something that could happen economically, you know, who knows what price of real estate's gonna do? We have a lot of empty homes in this town right now. What's to prevent a wave like this from happening? Because there, there is investor money out there that's looking for places to go. And with the rents that we're looking at for these vacation rentals, this is lucrative, and when you open the door, here they come. So that's kind of my concern. Thank you.
I think there's no limitation on distance or number of neighborhood or anything else, right?
We do, the ordinance does have a local contact person or a local contact number, you know, realistically, that could be a cell phone, you know, somebody's not physically present, and they have to be able to contact the renter to, you know, if there is a problem. I think the point made is that the reality of this bill, of this Airbnb bill, is that it opened, it does open the door for, you know, I don't want to get too excited, I mean, too overly excited about it, but it does open the door for residential units in the city, houses or condos, townhomes, to be used as a vacation rental all or part of the year, for a week or two at a time. And so, the purpose of the presentation today was to, since we can't outlaw it, you know, it's to deal with the potential impacts. And that's what this ordinance attempts to do, is, is if we have to allow it, you know, are we gonna, do we want to deal with the potential impacts, the outcomes, and try and prevent some of the real negative impacts from occurring in the first place? And that's what the ordinance attempts to do.
Just may have a quick question. So John, you were saying that if you're in a homeowner's association, or if you live in a neighborhood where you've signed CCNRs, then this could be prohibitive if, in fact, that's part of the CCNR?
If, if, yes, if the CCNRs prohibit less than 30-day rentals, or less than 29-day rentals, in other words, if you're gonna rent, it has to be month-to-month or annually, then, then the homeowner association, or the other properties that are beneficiaries of the CCNRs, can attempt to enforce those, but it's a, basically, a private process.
Sure. So let's say there's a, just scenario where there's a street and eight people, eight houses on the street, and they decide, "You know what? We don't want this on our neighborhood, so we're gonna come together and create something, and then we're all gonna sign it." Is that something that can be done?
You can.
Because it's being done privately?
Yeah, yeah, in theory, you could adopt CCNRs after the fact, but to bind a property, it all has to be voluntary, so.
Sure.
You would almost have to have that sort of unique situation where everybody agrees.
Everybody agrees to do that, okay, I just wondered.
But, yeah, you're right, I mean, more often than not, 90, probably 99% of the times, CCNRs are adopted by the original subdivision developer and imposed on the property before anybody else buys a lot or buys a house. And then when you buy it, it's disclosed in your title report, and, you know, and everybody is subject to it, so.
Mayor Brodine?
Thank you. John, you're not too long ago, there was a question at the legislature, and I don't remember what the outcome was, but the status of CCNRs on a statewide level came into play with regards to getting rid of the validity, the legal validity of CCNRs in the state of Arizona.
I don't think that can be done, quite honestly, with the constitution, or the contract clauses in both the state and federal constitution. I mean, CCNRs are essentially just a collective contract. So if the, if the state legislature tried to outlaw CCNRs, it'd probably be some sort of contract, but I'm not familiar with the specifics.
Thank you, I'm sharing with you that there was, and maybe still is, a movement to diminish the effect of CCNRs, homeowners associations, rules and regulations in the state of Arizona.
There are some, there is more of a movement to reduce the authority or the ability of a homeowner's association to impose, let's say, liens on the property, or fines on the property for American flags, or, I mean, I think what happens is, the legislature sort of, just chips away at, at certain actions that certain that certain HOAs tend to take. But overall, CCNRs are generally accepted as enforceable in Arizona.
Understanding that that's a contract, and I understand what you're saying, John. I'm just bringing it up that within the last three to five years, there was a whole lot of rhetoric, especially out of the governor's office, especially with the push of the legislature that currently sits down there on that very issue. So, I'm just bringing it up.
Any other, uh, public comment? Okay, um, Steve, go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor. You know, I think a lot of this is going to be self-limiting. I really do think that with what you've put down here in the ordinance, there are a lot of people who don't want to jump through these hoops. They don't want to have to charge tax to the people who are renting from them. They don't want to have to have a 24-hour person, a contact person. Um, you know, I, I don't want to underestimate the situation, but with what you've done here, um, I think that, that a lot of people are going to say, "I'll pass." So, that's my opinion.
Uh, Mark, why don't you come on up for a second? Now, if somebody does get licensed in January, um, will they register for TPT and bed tax with Phoenix Department of Revenue?
Yes, that's, yes, we're currently on track for the conversion over to state collections in the January timeframe. Um, the, currently, the online, um, the online licensing component, RA, will allow you to get your Prescott license when you sign up for your state license. So, that's already in place and moving forward. Um, as far as these things go, as John mentioned, they will be subject to TPT and also the bed tax. However, the state law also allowed for the Airbnb, the agent, to report and lump to the municipality. So, Airbnb will report a lump with no detail as to what addresses it was collected from. Um, the state law did allow that the individuals will have to get TPT license for their property, and then they are to report their total sales with a deduction that is being reported through a third-party agent type of thing. It is going to make enforcement a little more complex, let's say, um, but, you know, we will take whatever steps we can to try to make sure compliance is happening.
Go ahead.
Mayor, so we know now that we already have vacation rentals in town, and so, will we then follow up with those, and 165 of them, and say, "This is what, this is what the rule's going to be going forward," or do we just wait till they come to us, or it's just simple? Because I, I know during the home tour, the historical home tour, I sat in a house, that was a VBO, and, um, just wondering how that, how that will work.
Well, again, we always try to put education materials out there, and of course, is the responsibility of the business owner to know what the rules are. We're going to be doing, uh, publicity and information out for business license, licensing, and obviously, depending on what council does with this ordinance, we'll try to work that in somehow with that. We do, um, do enforcement efforts, we do schedule audits on vacation rentals we see.
There'd be a timeline that people need to follow.
Yeah. I mean, and again, we're, you know, we, we try to get the information out there, but the bottom line is, is the property owner's responsibility. So, if they don't see the ad in the paper or whatever we do, and then five years from now, they say, "You never told me." You know, that's too bad. It was their job as a business person to know what the rules are.
I mean, some are already doing. Steve, you mentioned that you didn't think a lot of people would want to go through these hoops. Some already are, um, have a vacation rental, so I think they probably definitely want to be compliant to the law.
Well, yeah, I think that also, they're going to have to comply with the codes.
Absolutely, yeah.
And that's going to limit a lot of situations.
Yeah.
It probably wouldn't be that difficult for us to do a mailing of the 165 entities, to be proactive.
They're online, so...
You're not talking about spending a tremendous amount of money and put them on notice that this is the rules of the game. I mean, I don't...
Sure.
I think that would be difficult to do.
Yeah, and in fact, as you recall from, maybe a couple of weeks ago, Craig, well, part of his weekly council update, there's a company that we can retain, I think we're talking to him tomorrow or next week?
Next week.
Uh, on a conference call about, you know, retaining that service, um, and they, you know, they tell us they're 165, but that's all they tell us until you actually pay for the service. It's, you know, that paywall. And then, they'll identify those and keep track of those, uh, basically by online, you know, just tracking online. So, well, we should be able to maintain a database that way, match it up to our business license database and the, and the registration certificate to make sure that they all have the property documentation, everything's been inspected, everybody's paid the fees. Um, so, it, it's a, I think it, you know, we'll talk, we'll talk tomorrow and see if it's a worthwhile service to retain, because it more than likely pays for itself if it provides us the information we need.
Okay. Any other questions, comments from the council? None from the public? Okay. Do you think we need to put in this one also, like you did on the ordinance on structures over to living homes, that it'll be reviewed within one year or less? Do you think it's necessary?
You know, Mayor, I don't know if, if this one, we necessarily have to put in a mandatory relook. I, I think you can look at any time. Um, and because vacation rental ordinances have been around, and we sort of mirrored this off of a couple of what we thought were good ones, or looked at a couple, and sort of took some provisions from different cities like Havasu and Scottsdale and those places. Um, I'm not sure we, you know, the structures over living, it was, it's so new, and it's so unique, that I think a forced look was a good thing. And this one, I don't think we necessarily need to. Um, and again, we can always take a look, see how it's working in a year or so, and make adjustments as needed. I guess the, you know, going forward, the only question is, there's sort of one suggested change about an age limit, um, and possibly, I can look, we'll look at the parking issue. So, uh, up to you whether you want to bring it back on the 25th or the first meeting in November.
John, if the city council had the desire to tweak around the margins with the maximum occupancy, do you think that's doable from a legal perspective, or would you just stay away from that?
I think our, our occupancy provisions here, um, are fairly consistent with what we're doing with structures over living homes and with our building code.
Okay.
I think they're a little bit more lenient, perhaps. Uh, at the same time, the building code, um, looks at ingress egress for occupancy as, as primarily, um, so that, you know, if, if it's a studio versus a one-bedroom, that there had, there's, you know, a bedroom has essentially two exits, the window and a door to the rest of the house. So, the building code will look at that, and those occupancies, the two plus two plus two, are really what we're going to consider maximum occupancy. So, if there's a building code problem or a building safety problem, and they find it, it may reduce that number. So, that two plus two plus two is a maximum number. Um, and if there are problems with, you know, with ingress egress or other things, and building safety discovers that, it could reduce the number. So, I think I would leave, I would leave the number currently, and then, again, if there's a building safety issue, it can go down from there.
Okay. So, next time you bring this to the council, you think it'll be ready for vote?
I think so. Again, the question is, do you want to do 25th or November, early November?
I'll work that out with the city manager.
Okay.
All right. Um, next item?
Item C, request for information regarding the October 11, 2016 voting meeting agenda items.
Anybody have any questions, comments on what we're going to talk about at 3 o'clock? Okay, thank you for coming, and this means adjourned. Hope to see you at 3 o'clock.